February 28, 2017, City Council meeting in McMinnville. And so we call this meeting to order. Again, we welcome you this evening. We remind you that tonight's proceedings are being recorded by MCM, McMinnville Community Media. And so if you could put your phones on silence and if you do need to make a call or accept the call, please go out to the lobby so it doesn't disrupt our proceedings this evening. We're going to start our meeting this evening with a pledge of allegiance and Councillor Rudin will lead us in now.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alan. We're to that point in our meeting tonight where we have an invitation to citizens for public comment. And so we would ask anyone that would like to approach the council with comments that they would come up at this time. Again, we remind you that topics that you may not be able to address us on tonight would be a topic already on the agenda, a matter of litigation, a quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. And we are a bit aware of an item that has come up to the Planning Commission this last week that could be coming to us in some future date. And so we're not going to hear testimony on that tonight, even though that may have gotten out that that might have come before the council tonight. And that's on the piece of property out on Hill Road and Baker Creek. Heather, anything more on that? Okay. So do we have anyone that would like to approach the council tonight? Again, I'll call for anyone that would like to approach the council tonight. Hearing none, then we will move forward. Tonight, we have three presentations that are coming before the council. And our first presentation is going to be a presentation by Henderson House for the commissioned artwork to the city council. And so we have from Henderson House tonight, the Executive Director, and hopefully I'll get these names right, but Savina. And then we've got Beverly that are coming before us. And if you can, do they need to sign in? No, we're recognizing them. So go ahead.
All right. Savina wants to just...
And the chief is bringing over some extra chairs.
Oh, all right. Okay. It's just gonna be a quick. I was gonna sit down. My name's Beverly Canute. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Henderson House Family Crisis Shelter. This is Savina Falquist.
Beverly, could you bring the mic a little closer to you?
Okay.
Thank you.
And this is Savina Falquist, our Executive Director, Brandy McIntosh, our Programs Manager, and Eric Wright, our Board Chair, and Nola Coons, Board Member. And I'd like to start with giving you a brief synopsis of what we do for Henderson House. Our formal legal name is Family Crisis Shelter and Services for Yamhill County, Inc. We serve individuals that are in need of shelter and services for domestic violence and sexual assault. Our story begins in August of 1980 when the Legal Services Office here in McMinnville wanted to do something about the growing problem of domestic violence here in Yamhill County. By the time I was the Director of Legal Services at that time, he hired Mary Henderson to head up the process of starting a family crisis shelter that would serve all of Yamhill County. Mary Henderson was a local person who had no formal training in the field of domestic violence, only what she had experienced in regards to domestic violence in her marriage to her first husband. It took almost a year and a half to get Mary trained and knowledgeable to run a shelter. In that time, she would speak to local service clubs and businesses to acquire donations so that we could open the shelter and have it stocked with food and ready to accept clients. That was late, in 1981. After a few years, we became more commonly known as Henderson House. Our long formal name was a mouthful to say, and people we worked with along with the volunteers wanted to name the shelter after Mary Henderson. In 1988, we were growing out of our present shelter and were in need of finding a larger place for our clients and staff. In September of that year, we applied for an Oregon Community Development Block Grant to purchase a home that Walt and Shelley Gallow had found for us that would work wonderfully for us as a shelter home. With the help of the city officials at that time, Mayor Ed Gormley, City Manager Kent Taylor, Planning Director and Economic Development Director Rick Highsmith, then District Attorney John Collins, and Sheriff Lee Vasquez, we were successful in winning that block grant to purchase the home the Gallows had found for us. This process was completed in April of 1990. The Henderson House Advocacy Center is our office that we work out of today to provide a vital link to the public for access to our services. It is located on the corner of First and Fourth Streets here in McMinnville. We purchased that building and made it into our offices in 2003. This allowed us to free up some of the rooms at the shelter that we are using for our offices and turn those rooms into more living quarters for our shelter clients. In November of 2015, the city of McMinnville fulfilled a dream for us to acquire the deed to own that shelter facility free and clear. This was done through the work of then-City Manager Martha Meeker, Acting City Attorney Walt Cowell, then-Mayor Rick Olson, and the City Council members Kevin Jeffries, Alan Rudin, Scott Hill, Kelly Minke, Remy Drapkin, and Larry Yoder. We need to name all these individuals because of the importance of their decision to allow us to own that shelter facility outright. We want to thank you so much for allowing us to realize that dream. Today, we are here to present to the city of McMinnville our gift to them for their continued gratitude for all they have done to help us with serving victims of domestic violence and sexual assault in our community. I'd like to turn this over to Savina Falquist. And Eric Wright is going to show you the piece of artwork that we've had done.
Okay, I'll do the best I can to keep it in a white. I think it's a real saw blade. It's very sharp and it's heavy enough, so I'll try the best I can.
Without cutting yourself.
Look at that. There it is.
Oh, lovely.
Okay.
So we had a former board member named Heather Gorman who actually drew up the design. And then we had a local artist. We commissioned a local artist to be able to put this together. I want to say that we're in the process of a lot of transition, and this gift to us is allowing us to make some very big changes that needed to happen to meet the people where they're at. And so we just appreciate the support that we've gotten from the city of McMinnville. I can't talk either.
I know.
And yeah, thank you, on behalf of all of our families and our staff and our board.
Yeah. And Adam right there, I've got to recognize him because he got a crew together to fix our advocacy center play area, took out all this broken tile and put concrete and made it really nice and for our kids. So thank you.
We are, we're very blessed. This community is phenomenal for our families.
Okay.
Great.
So there's some major bolts, and I would say go high if you're going to put it on a wall.
Okay.
And not where you'd make your walk.
We'll find an appropriate place to put that. Before you leave, any comments from any member of the council to the group? Alan, I'll start down.
No, just great work. Good to see the progress through the years and how it's grown and developed and successful.
Since 1981, we've served a lot of people, a lot of kids, families, a lot of individuals.
Remy?
Thank you.
Wendy?
Thank you for, thank you for your hard work and contribution to the community.
Takes a lot of volunteers, that's for sure. Dedicated staff, we're very fortunate with the staff we have. They're great. We're very fortunate.
Adam?
Great work. And you know how I feel about you guys' cause, so thank you for everything you do. And it's been great to see you take it by the reins and get through that transition.
Kelly?
I echo the thanks. I know I've participated in Sunrise Rotary a number of times on a number of projects, and we just thank the world of your ministry and appreciate it very much. Thank you.
And I likewise. I mean, I've been in the community since 1992 and the good work you do. My former employer, we used to have an opportunity to come out and do some painting and some work over at the house. But I think more importantly is a definite need in this community, and this is a group that's full of passion at what they do. And that's kind of what our tagline at the city is, passionate people giving back. And so if, I'll just come down, I'd like to shake your hand and all that you guys do.
We're supposed to be thanking you.
It's a partnership. Thank you, you guys. Thank you. And I'd love to come up and just... Sure. Yeah. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Well, with that, now we have the opportunity to review the McMinnville Downtown Association's annual financial statement. And Rebecca, the Executive Director, will come up to present. But we also last week had an opportunity, a few of us, to be a part of the MDA's annual business meeting and auction, and we had a great time just showing, I'll tell you, this group is on fire. And it is a, it's a group that's changing from year to year. And it brings so much new blood and enthusiasm to the table. So I just, I was amazed at not knowing probably 60% of the people because they're newer to town and they're very engaged. But with that, Rebecca, go ahead and we welcome you.
Great. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. And I agree that the annual dinner was a little rowdy almost even. It was a lot of fun though. So this evening, I'll be presenting the financials for the McMinnville Downtown Association. And just a quick recap for you on what we do and what our mission is. The McMinnville Downtown Association works to promote and enhance our historic district as the economic, social, and cultural heart of the community. We follow a four-point approach as per the National Main Street. Of those four points, it's kind of our committees, our main committees, which then have subcommittees under them. They're involved with design, organization, promotions, and economic vitality. So I had the city about a year and a half ago design this map for me. Thank you so much. Because a lot of people ask us the question on what's the difference between our urban renewal, our urban renewal district compared to our economic improvement district compared to our historic district. As you can see, they all overlay on top of each other. The yellow is our historic district. The blue and red hash marks would be our two zones for our economic improvement district. And then the urban renewal is the bolded black outline, the larger spatial area. So the economic improvement district in 2016, so just in June of last year, was renewed again for another three years, which is great. We're the longest standing economic improvement district in the state of Oregon, something we're really proud of. And it was created in 1986, so we just celebrated our 30th year. So we work, our role there is to work in partnership with the city to manage those funds. So we're charged, as per our ordinance, to help with the promotion of economic improvement by planning or management of development and improvement activities. We also help out with landscaping and other maintenance of public areas, the promotion of commercial activities and public events like UFO Festival. We also work to, for the activities and support of business recruitment and development. And then improvements in parking systems, parking enforcement, we also play a role in that as well. But historic preservation, the Main Street community world, that is one of our largest focuses. So we hold a membership in both the National Main Street Organization and Oregon's Main Street programs. They all have similar approaches, and that preservation is a top priority. So we've assisted in our goals to develop a comprehensive incremental revitalization strategy based on our own unique assets in McMinnville. We have a really wonderful historic district. We have wine tourism, so we really try to capitalize on that. We focus on economic growth through historic preservation, and currently we're working on some major grants for a new grant program called the Oregon Revitalization Grant. It's a 70-30 matching grant, up to $100,000. I have five of those grants going in, and fingers are crossed that we're awarded a few of those. 91 Oregon communities are part of the Oregon Main Street World. 2,200 are part of it nationwide. MDA is one of seven at the performing level, which is the top level. And since the Oregon program was revitalized, we've been awarded performing level seven out of seven years, which is a huge honor. Last year, so our economic benchmarks per calendar year, not per our fiscal year, would be a net gain of five new businesses in the district, had a 32 net gain of new employees, an estimated $3.7 million invested in downtown improvement projects, and more than 2,632 volunteer hours, which is amazing, and that's also more than any other Main Street community in Oregon, something we're really proud of. So some of our accomplishments. At the top of the list, I think this is one that we should all kind of be applauding ourselves on, is the partnership with the Park Ranger Program. It's a highly successful program. We'll be entering our fourth year. Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, I sit on that committee as well as the Historic Landmarks Committee. We had a record attendance again for UFO Festival, Farmer's Market, and our annual awards dinner. And we have an increased attendance, and we continue to sell out for our historic tours, which is great. So our annual review, as per our Articles of incorporation, I'm required to give you two copies, and I supplied those. So there's two copies for you to review. If you have any questions, I can answer those as well. They were prepared by Bernards and Associates CPA. We hold a strong financial position at the year end with $76,000 in current assets. The Cosine House is owned free and clear of liens. And our operating reserves are, we're working to build those up in preparation. The Cosine House does need to be repainted, and we do need a new roof. And one thing we feel strongly about is getting ADA access, ramp access in our back. So sources of income, we have a $260,000 operating budget. A roughly 48% comes from promotions and events, and $58,000 of that comes from sponsorships. There's a sponsorship packet I placed in front of you, something that we've developed. And it's been going pretty well. I'll encourage you all to take a lovely look at that, and if you feel like being a sponsor, give me a call tomorrow. 21% of our income comes from the Economic Improvement District assessments. 11% comes from our membership dues. The city and county contributions comes to roughly $17,400. Meetings and conferences is about 6%. The Cosine House rental, we rent, we have three rental units above on the second floor that we rent out, and that brings in about $11,820 a year. And then other income is roughly 2%. So how we use our resources, personnel expenses is 43%. Events and promotions cost roughly $84,000, $85,000 a year. Administrative costs are 8%. Our committees, mainly those, the four, design, organization, economic vitality, those are, that's 8%. The Cosine House, it's a historic home, causes a lot of maintenance. It's 5% of our use of resources. And then meetings and conferences to attend is 4%. So kind of things we're looking forward to this year into the future is we're working with Visit McMinnville and along with other different partnerships and collaborators within the community for the wayfinding project you all have heard about, the Parking Task Force. Grant writing and historic preservation's the top of the list, especially for me as the new Executive Director. That's one of the strengths that I bring to the table. An internship program that continues to strengthen the bond with Winfield. We will have three interns in over the summer. And the Park Patrol program that we work with in collaboration with the city. Any questions?
Just a comment, Rebecca, that I would have. I really enjoy what you guys are doing. Moved to McMinnville in 1992, and the first organization I got involved in was the MDA as a treasurer. And I did the books on a spreadsheet before we, because we were, you know, we didn't have much going on. But I have seen over the 25 years such a steady growth and a consistency in advocating for the downtown. And so when we talk about the brilliance of Third Street, we bow to the MDA. My travels at work had taken me up and down the Willamette Valley, and by far, we were the envy of any downtown association. And I remember Corvallis was one that's a very strong organization, but we're still the envy of them. And I remember just having a feeling of pride of the cooperativeness and today, the partnering. That hasn't been, the partnering hasn't been as strong as it is today. At one point, I think we had the Chamber and the downtown kind of, there were some infidings, and I left the MDA board to go to the Chamber to be a liaison. And I've just seen today the partnering and the whole community working together, and then knowing that you guys are a part with Visit McMinnville and the Chamber, and cooperatively looking at best ways to keep the gem, which is our downtown, alive and well. And then when we take a look at our urban renewal dollars and we look at some of the transportation, some of the things that we're going to be able to do in the Alpine area, Fifth Street, and the enhancements we're going to be able to do downtown. I know on Murak's board, under Heather's direction, that we've put the downtown as one of those intermediate goals of going in and really enhancing some things there. So from my perspective, thank you. And take that back to the board, take it back to the volunteers, that we truly see you as a hand-in-hand partnership. And so again, thank you, and thank you for the report tonight. Again, any other questions or thoughts? Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We now have an opportunity to have a presentation by Visit McMinnville. And Jeff Knapp, the Executive Director, will be addressing us, and he's got some slides and some, he met with us at dinner tonight and just gave us some little thoughts there. But again, I know Jeff has a presentation for us tonight. A lot of good things happening with Visit McMinnville. It's one that's a fun one to be a part of. Go ahead, Jeff.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. It's an honor to be here. Jeff Knapp, Executive Director of Visit McMinnville. First off, I'd like to also second everything you said about the MDA, and they provide us such a jewel to promote. We're so blessed to not only have the vibrant downtown that we have, but to have people like Rebecca leading the charge for our economic development organization. So we definitely are working on a collaborative, a community of collaboration here. So let me pull up my, here we go, before we get started. Would you mind giving me a hand? Sorry about that. I'm not so tech savvy with PCs, I'm a Mac person. Publicly apologize. Awesome, thank you. So I thought today I'll be presenting a Q4 recap. So to remind you, we're kind of looking always at the future and the past with our organization. I'm here today to talk about particularly Q4 of 2016, that's October, November, and December. And I'll try to keep focused on that, but we've got, so we'll start off with just a reminder of who we are and how we operate. So this is a list of all of our board members. And really, we've had some changes to the board since the last time we met. The biggest one is that Scott Hill stepped into the role as mayor, and we welcome Councillor Minke to our board. And we are currently awaiting, anxiously awaiting, appointment for the city. There's another non-voting spot open on our board, and we're anxious to see who the city decides to let us have. So we're excited to see that. We welcome Mr. Towery to the community, and hopefully he'll be able to attend some meetings upcoming and let us know how that, what the decision is. So who are we? Just a reminder, we are an innovative marketing organization dedicated to enhancing McMinnville's economy by attracting as many visitors as possible to the city. And once they're here, ensuring that they spend as much money as possible with local businesses. So we're very direct with our goal. And the good thing about our goal is that it's measurable. So I'm here today to tell you a little bit about our measured success and where we're tweaking and how we can, how we're doing. So we measure our success in two overall ways, lodging tax and occupancy. So lodging tax created by people staying in our hotels, bed and breakfasts, vacation rentals for under 30 days at a time. Occupancy, more people coming more frequently and staying in those areas. We have, we have great reporting right now on the TLT. We're working to get more accurate occupancy reporting. It's sort of a, where we have to compare a few different numbers. We rely on the public to, or the logic requires to voluntarily remit that information, and sometimes that's missing. So we're still getting our feet around that data. But overall, it looks like we have a 63% hotel occupancy as of right now as a benchmark. And we get that through a report called a STAR report, which is a Smith Travel Resource report, which is included in the big packet you got. Website traffic to Visit McMinnville, so the more visitors that we are enticing with our media to our, the engine of our model and ensuring that they're finding local businesses. We have good news to report on that front this evening. We have over 100,000 unique visitors in our first year, which is, we're very proud of. And referral traffic, not just the people to our website, but are they actually utilizing our website to get to local tourism stakeholders for conversion? And we have some good metrics on that, over 25% of people that are currently visiting our site, which is, which is the number one thing, they're called events. And the number one event they're doing is looking for places to stay. So 25% of people that log onto our site end up going to our lodging stay category. And our second largest metric is people then being referred out off of our website. So we're, we know we're doing what we're set to do with our metrics, we're just looking to see those go up as we look forward. So how are we doing for Q4? So bring out the laser pointer. This is Q4 here, and this is October, November, and December of 2016. Good news is we are up 9.1% over the year prior, fiscal year 15. What we can see through this graph, it's pretty apparent where we have opportunities for growth here. We call this the low and the shoulder seasons, and that's what we're really focusing our attention and energy on and dollars, and which you'll see today in our spending and our budget. You can see the small growth in Q3. This is our summer months, and you can really see we're capped out here. There's not much, we've hit the ceiling sort of as far as accommodations, demand versus needs. It'll be exciting to see all of our new lodging partners coming online in the upcoming years. But, so Q1 and Q4 is where you'll see most of our, all of our marketing efforts really directed to encourage people to make change there in those two quarters. That's where the opportunity lies. So jumping into numbers, first of all, I brought, this is a new slide that I brought you information tonight. This is a synthesis of the following two slides. But basically, so over the Q4, we were just recently remitted, the city remitted $94,233 to us. Those are the funds collected between October, November, and December of 2016. That again, as a reminder, is 69% of the lodging taxes collected by the city. Our overhead expenses for this period strategically, well, first of all, before I get into this, I should remind you that our largest, the focus is to improve overnight visitor traffic in the shoulder season and low seasons. That's November through April. So we have intentionally planned deficit spending to prime the tourism pump, so to speak, to make as big of an impact as we can early. So we're trying to utilize marketing dollars to see Q4 and Q1 change. So we've weighted our annual spending heavily in these months and implemented our strategy and winter marketing campaigns, which we'll outline ahead as we move through this presentation. Another reminder is that the majority of our marketing spending is discretionary and can be stopped with short notice. So we can be very reactive to the data that we're getting. If we're making an impact, if we're not, we can, we can flip the switch. So that being said, we're currently, this is our performance for Q3, Q4. We are, we strategically implemented use of our reserve funding to make that impact, and we are ending this period with cash levels of $77,894.11. Currently in Q1, we're dialing back marketing spending and gearing up for planning for fiscal year 18. These are the, all of the data that feeds those other two, that roll-up document. This is broken down and exactly how we've spent that money. I gave you that ahead of time, and be willing to answer any questions at the end about any of those dollars. This is more support of that, basically showing all of the expenditures and the ending cash at the end of the period. Whoops. So talking a little bit about our successes and how we... So talking a little bit about our successes and how we have, what we've been up to. We are very proud of the visitor survey data that we implemented with RRC and you should have all received a fairly lengthy document on visitors. So we, we partnered with RRC. They are a company out of Boulder, Colorado, who specialize in tourism data surveys. And we hired survey ambassadors to position themselves throughout the summer at strategic locations, tourism locations, predominantly downtown, local wineries and at the Evergreen Museum complex. And through that process, we gained data, which we use to focus all of our marketing efforts on. I won't get too heavily into this, it's a very thick document. What I can tell you is that of the people surveyed, it shows a very, a more mature visitor with over 50% of the, the, the survey takers have with household and, household incomes of over $100,000 and 20% of those with household incomes over $200,000. So the people that like to engage in surveys are a more mature luxury traveler that, that are here. And there's, there's a lot of data in here and I encourage you to read that, but this is the data that we will be using to target all of our, our marketing efforts. We, we, in our first year, we found, as I said, over 100,000 visits to our website, which when baselining with Travel Oregon for a DMO, a destination marketing organization such as ourselves, their expectations were that we would hit a 20,000 person unique visitor number and we have far surpassed that. So we feel very good about that number. Our social media is on pace to double in all realms, in all of our channels for this year. So that's, we're active on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. I hope I'm not leaving anything out. Sorry Kitri.
She gave tooth out of it.
So we've also, we've created 30 minute, 32nd, 30 minute commercials. We've created 30 second winter television advertisements, which encourage people to come here during the winter months. And we are currently targeting those in the Portland DMA. So to, to people within the demographics that we, we gathered from this data, we are serving these comic, these commercials, which we'll show shortly on Comcast and Xfinity. Our PR hits earned media, we're very proud of. We're pacing ahead of our goals, which is to have a million earned impressions. We've had some very great coverage and hosted some really good media over this last Q4. We've hosted Travel Oregon's Nordic Media Tour. These are writers and journalists from Nordic countries. We were able to show them a day and evening in McMinnville. We've hosted writers from SIP Northwest. We, Wine Enthusiast Magazine, which we like to think resulted in helping us become, the Willamette Valley become the wine region of the year globally, which we're very proud of. We've hosted media from Vice Munchies. Most recently, Brian Friedman with Forbes Magazine, which you will read an article today that came out online, which we're very excited about. And our Sunset Magazine Best Main Street Award for the West Coast, which we're very proud of. And again, we couldn't do that without the work that the MDA does. So on top of that, we have formed an ad hoc committee addressing citywide wayfinding systems and are very close to being able to pull the trigger with that master plan for the city, which we're very proud of. We meet regularly with all of the economic development organizations monthly to make sure that we're all in alignment and taking advantage of all of the, the, the opportunities that we have here as a community. And there's a lot of other things that I should probably, but for the sake of time, I think I'll just show you our video. So this is the video that is currently playing on Comcast and Xfinity. If again, I can work a PC, we will.
We know you've been thinking about a weekend getaway. The heart of Oregon wine country is closer than you think and even more charming than you imagine. So come hang out with us. Plan your McMinnville's day at visitmcmville.com.
So the idea of this commercial is a short, sweet look into things that you can do here, regardless of weather and giving you a, encouraging you that it's just a, we know you've been thinking about a vacation. We're very close and these are the reasons why you should come and hang out with us. Sort of a more approachable, laid-back, authentic kind of voice. So we're very proud of that. I'm gonna mess this up again, aren't I? I'll move on without the slide, just for the sake of, we'll keep it small. But our current projects that we're working on, so we are in the middle of, we just wrapped up our first strategic planning envisioning session as a board, which we're very excited about. We were, we met in January for a day-long retreat and followed that up with some, some help from a gentleman, a facilitator named Randy Harrington, to help us envision and strategize the next critical steps as an organization, identify our strengths and what we need is, you know, to take us to that next level. Very excited about that. We're currently in the middle of budget and marketing planning for fiscal year 18. We'll be presenting that to council on the eight, or in May. We're running our current winter ad campaign on Comcast and Xfinity. We are promoting and getting ready for the solar eclipse. Sounds, if you're not aware of that, you should be. August 21st, we're right in the path of a pretty major celestial phenomenon, which is just supposed to drive a lot of traffic. So our hotels are already booked for that, there's events being planned. But on a state level, they're really encouraging that we, we make sure that we're prepared with water and fire trucks and all sorts of things that, but really it's a, it's quite the phenomenon. Supposedly, supposedly all porta-potties in the state are booked that day. You can't get anymore porta-potties. We are very excited about an opportunity.
Can we move Alien Days to the?
Yeah, we should online, that seems like there's some synergy there. We are very excited about a database revamp, which will allow our website to be what we know it can be. We've been looking to invest in the production or the creation of a database and we've identified a partnership with Travel Oregon, which will allow us to have a, a free resource that will, will make our, make people be able to find our stakeholders and what we have to offer even easier. We're currently focusing on wine country bridal resources, cycling resources for summer traveling and building out maps and itineraries for those. And we're actively working with the McMinnville Community Wayfinding Committee. Thank you. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you Jeff. Any questions from the board or comments?
I have a quick question about the ad. In the survey results, it showed that we are very strong with the average age of about 55. Was it strategic that there were, that demographic wasn't represented in the ad? Are you trying to draw other demographics here or?
So there's, to answer your question, it's twofold. So we have to look at the two, two things. People that like to take surveys are, through, through our anecdotal information, through our survey takers, younger people would not stop and engage in surveys. So we would give them website things to follow up. So we had a more, more mature audiences, were prone to share their opinions. So we know that there are definitely separate demographics here. In that video, there, there are mature folks having dinner inside Nyx. But really, we're, we're targeting four different demographics. So we're family travel, also we're showing family things at the museum, young foodie, couples, girls weekend, which we know are here in quantities, bachelorette parties, that type of thing. And then luxury travel. So we're trying to hit all four of those, those profiles with, with that commercial.
Well done.
Alma?
Jeff, thank you. Great report. The mayor fills us in on his excitement and passion for visiting McMinnville all the time and so many things going on and so much fruition coming. On your opinion of what the next level is for the city of McMinnville? You talked about the next step or the next level. Where do you see that being and what?
I think that we could really benefit for, from some serious conference or convention space, ability to bring people here year-round to, for whatever those reasons are, an indoor sporting event, if it is business conferences, if it is arts and culture events. I think that the next level for us to really make a big, a big growth in, in tourism and transient lodging taxes, other than the organ, you know, the more people's coming, we definitely need more hotels at certain times of the year. But I think that with structures like some sort of a, a conference convention arts center, we could really leverage that into significant dollars.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd be happy to provide staff to, to sell those spaces.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Great job. It's been awesome to see you guys grow since the inception of this. The only data that I didn't see in your packet, and I could have missed it, there's a ton of information in there. Are you guys tracking organic marketing, like things that's naturally generating itself and not paid for advertising?
Yeah, so we get, we do, yes. We get a marketing report, we, we engage in a PR company and we get a monthly report of any time McMinnville's mentioned in the media. And then we know pretty, I mean, that's sort of a hard question to answer. We know what our PR company is engaged with, which is earned media. We know, we can track what we've paid for and the result of those things mostly, but we, we get a report monthly on, and I'd be happy to share that with the council monthly on just everywhere that McMinnville comes up, whether it's a blog or a, you know, a mention in, who knows? I mean, it's all over the place. We have, it's hard to delineate where those things come from.
Thank you.
I find Travel McMinnville is an absolutely fabulously fun committee to work, be a part of and the board is exceptional as is leadership. So thanks to Kitri and you too Jeff.
And I should, I'm sorry, I didn't point out Kitri McGuire. She is a vital part of our organization. We're an organization of two, that is, she's our marketing manager and we couldn't do what we do without her, so.
The strategic planning session that's occurred over the last couple of months has been exceptional too. Really have enjoyed the process.
Well, thank you. There's, there's an unbelievable amount of potential in so many different ways here in McMinnville and it's, and it's great to be able to help link all of those things together.
Two comments Jeff in closing that I would have. Number one, your board meeting tomorrow, please take back to the board how much we appreciate them. This was a board that a year ago was meeting two times a month for two to three hours at a time. And you talked about passion and dedication to moving the organization to where it's at right now. So take that back to the board. They are just a phenomenal representation of, of the quality of boards that we see throughout, throughout the community. And then secondarily, I would just, Joya just came in and we, we have the MDA, we have the Chamber and we have long legacies in those two organizations of superior groupings and leadership. And, and I'll tell you right now, I'm so excited with the current leadership we have, the new ideas, the, the, again, I use the word passion that you have. You feel it every moment that we're around you. And then I can take a look at MDP and, and Visit McMinnville and these are newer a bit groups, but they still have the same passion. And then you guys meeting together on your own with one purpose in mind is to growing McMinnville in an appropriate way. And we have different tools, you're all on the same tool belt, you're working together to just enhance what we have here. So again, thanks the Visit McMinnville, but I even more of a broad spectrum of the group that have been brought together.
For sure, it's huge. And I would also like to add the importance of Heather Richards, who's most recently joined all of, a lot of these discussions and provided a lot of exciting ideas and actionable knowledge. So hold on, I think we're gonna move very quickly. Thank you for the trust.
Thank you Jeff. Okay, that takes us to, we have our consent agenda tonight and we have a resolution 2017-15. And this is a resolution approving the KeyBank Business Public Entity Dispository Certificate Resolution and authorizing it to be signed by the finance director. And so Marsha, just very, uh, give us a little background on that and I'll see if we can move forward with the consent agenda.
Yes, thank you Mr. Mayor. This is really a housekeeping item. The KeyBank actually requires this resolution to appoint the new city manager as an authorized officer. That's because the, being an authorized officer does give that person, you know, authority to add signers and take some other action on the city's accounts. So it is a housekeeping item to allow us to add Jeff Towery as the authorized officer.
Thank you. And so I'll ask if any member of the council or member of the audience would have this item taken off the consent agenda. It's only thing on, so it's, it's almost a mute point, but okay. I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
It has been moved by Councillor Stassenz and seconded by Councillor Rudin. All in favor may signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. And we see that this has been approved unanimously. This now takes us to new business for the evening and we have interviews for two vacancies that we find on our planning commission. Wendy is one of those that have moved on to the council. And again, we, we really welcome her here, but. Okay.
I'm gonna recuse myself from this portion of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you Remy. And so let me just do a couple of things this evening. Well, we have five candidates for an at-large position, Brad Bassett, Aaron Butler, Charles Hilsted, Kyle Lake and Aaron Williams. And we have four applicants for Ward Two position. Janelle Carey, Susan Dirks, Roger Lewitz and Jack Morgan. And so in setting up what we're going to do tonight, if I may just share just a brief comment or two. The planning commission is a nine-membered city council-appointed body, which takes actions and makes recommendations to the city council on a variety of current and long-range land use matters. There are two types of memberships on this committee. Number one is ward representatives and we have two representatives from each of the three wards within the city. And then we have at-large community members, three in total, that make up the at-large. Ward members must be residents of the city of McMinnville and live within the ward they represent. At-large members must be residents of the city of McMinnville and reside within the McMinnville urban growth boundary. All members serve for a four-year term per the McMinnville City Code Section 2.32.020. And the common council should strive to appoint members who represent a cross-section of the citizens of McMinnville and who will provide the planning commission with expertise in the area of planning. Those possess, possessing a broad experience of interest and general concern with the planning process, which requires for the functioning of this body. Now, we're doing something a little differently in appointing members to our committees and to our commissions. The council will now be interviewing both new applicants and incumbents for open positions. And this mirrors the process that we use for our elected officials, like the city council, where we serve for four years. And if you want to go back on, then you have to make an application for that. So what we're looking for tonight is the best candidate to serve in these positions. And so with that being said, what I think we're going to do is we will have an opportunity, we've given each candidate five questions. And so they- opportunity, we've given each candidate, uh, five questions, and so they've been able to prepare. We're giving them a total of five minutes, so this is gonna be kind of speed dating interviewing tonight, but we have quite a few that we're going to go through. And so, um, Heather, anything else that I've overlooked? We're going to take all the candidates and remove them and bring them in one by one, uh, so that other candidates don't hear, uh, what the other candidates have to say prior to, uh, presenting to the council. Anything I've missed? Okay. We're going to do this, uh, with, um, our at-large position first, and, but we'll take everyone, and we're gonna be doing this by alphabetical. Uh, it just seemed to be the right way to do it, as I talked to our attorney. So, we're going to have every candidate move into council chambers, and we will be starting with Brad first. So Brad, you can stay here. And, uh, we recognize your son and daughter, 'cause they've, uh, they've been before us before. We just wanted to say hi to you guys. We remember you.
Am I to come up here?
Yeah. So we'll, we'll allow each of our candidates to... And Heather will come out and give us a, a go-ahead when we're able to move forward. And Melissa, if you will help us with the timing of, and again, keep your comments to the five minutes, but again, um... And given that we, they know the questions, uh, do we still want to have each of the councillors ask one, or just?
I think we can just have them.
Yeah, why don't you, you've got them, so...
Yeah, so, do you want me to read the questions to you?
Yeah, if you would, uh, get, read the question and then answer to you, uh, from your perspective, and... Are we okay, David? Okay, go ahead, Brad.
All right, well, thank you guys for, uh, allowing me to be here tonight. I am grateful for the opportunity to, uh, serve this community. And, uh, Jeff, welcome to, uh, City Manager. Thank you, uh, for all that you're going to do for this city. Uh, so, starting out, number one, what are those qualities that you value most about the McMinnville community? Well, McMinnville is beautiful. I love the way the city flows. Our streets are designed well with, uh, and the historical small-town feel is very nice. I love all the events around, uh, around town, from the Turkey Rama to the farmer's market, or my favorite, Drag the Gut. McMinnville is a great town to live in, and I can see why anyone would want to visit or move here. Uh, if I had to say just one thing that I love about McMinnville, it would be Third Street. Absolutely, so... Number two, McMinnville prides itself on being a, uh, a mid-sized Oregon city town, uh, with a small-town feel. What do you see as the top one or two land use concerns that could threaten, uh, McMinnville's way of life in the near future? Well, I too take pride in the small-town feel of McMinnville. Uh, even as we continue to grow going forward, I believe the following are critical for keeping the small-town feel. Parking, when it comes, uh, when locals and visitors struggle to find parking where and when they need it, uh, that's robbing them of that small-town feel that we all love. Uh, accessibility, this one relates closely to the last. The layout of our streets and commercial approaches are key to a small-town feel. And pedestrian safety, uh, the feeling of safety while walking on our streets is absolutely necessary when considering what it takes to keep a small-town feel as the town grows. It's important as our city grows to keep safe pedestrian traffic on our sidewalks. Uh, to follow up on the previous question, what skills or experiences would you bring to the commission that would be helpful in addressing those possible future concerns? Well, I'm in the construction industry. Uh, in my line of work, I design site plans and building plans, and take these plans and turn them into a reality. Uh, I have the ability to visualize a project from a plan. Uh, I can read and interpret plans and have a general knowledge of zoning requirements in McMinnville. I believe that the knowledge I've acquired in my career will lend itself well to the planning commission. And number four, there may be times when you, uh, when as a planning commissioner, you have land use criteria that legally point you toward one decision, and a hearing room full of concerned citizens that point you in the opposite direction. How would you manage that situation to reach a recommendation or decision? Well, uh, by joining the planning commission, I do understand it comes with limitations within the laws and ordinances of McMinnville. With that said, I do feel it's extremely important to listen to the citizens we serve in any governing role. In fact, I believe in any relationship, if you want to be heard, you must first listen well. In this situation, I would listen to the voices of the citizens and see if there's room within the land use criteria to meet their needs and wants. Lastly, why should you, we appoint you to the planning commission at this time? Well, as the city of McMinnville continues to grow, the need for sound, well-considered land use decision-making becomes ever more critical. I know that I have what it takes to serve this community in a fair and sound way. I admit to not knowing everything needed for this position, for sure. However, I do promise you that I will work hard and glean everything I can from the training for this position and from staff that's available to educate. I'm excited to be here tonight, and I thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you, Brad. With the time we have left, um, any questions of Brad, or Brad, any questions you'd have of us?
I don't have any for you guys, thank you, though.
Okay, any, any further questions from member of the council? Thank you, Brad. Feel free to sit with your family, and you can stay in.
Thank you.
And we will now, Erin. Erin, what we determined to do is, um, if you have the questions, we'll just let you, we've got five minutes, so you can address the questions that we have given to you. If you need us to read them, we can do that, um, uh, but just addressing the council. So what would be your pleasure?
Um, so, what is my, what are my opt, I don't need them read to me.
Okay, go ahead, then.
So you just want me to talk about...
Yeah, just go down our five questions.
Um, well, so I did this before. I'm feeling, uh, I don't want to be, sound like trite, because I feel like I already, um, addressed these before, so sorry if I sound jaded. Um, so, basically, you know, I love living in McMinnville. Um, I think this is a, a really great town. I love that I can walk to work, and on my way to work, I walk down Third Street, um, and, you know, just get that really wonderful vibe, uh, from this town. So, um, the land use concerns, um, affordable housing, um, I, I mentioned before that I have a lot of, um, young friends who, you know, they work hard, uh, and they continually, I hear about how it's challenging to find affordable housing. Um, so, and, uh, just making sure that, you know, as we are wanting to attract tourists here, um, that we are also keeping in mind, um, the, the use for the people who actually And, uh, um, just keeping it biker and walker-friendly. Um, so, um, skills or experiences, um, I was a public school teacher for eight years, um, different parts of the country, um, in Charlotte, North Carolina, and Portland. I was also a board member on the Friends of the Library in Portland for, I wanna say three years, but I can't really remember now. Um, and part of that, um, part of that time, we, uh, got a, a district passed, so that we no longer had to do a levy, um, every year to fund, um, our really great public libraries. Um, so I guess that's all to say that I, you know, worked together with other people in the community to get things done. Um, and, um, number four, uh, I think the main thing is that you're, you're sort of acting like, uh, a lawyer. You have to like, understand, you know, the, the criteria first, and that you're acting on, you know, making a judgment from criteria and not from, like, your own personal opinion. Um, and that you have to, uh, listen to the people's concerns and answer their concerns while upholding the criteria that you're meant to uphold. And why should you appoint me? Well, um, I'm, like I, I'm really excited about being in this community, and I have a, some passion for it, and I want to be involved, so, thank you.
Um, any questions for Erin, or any questions, Erin, you'd have of us, too? Feel free that, uh, you could, uh, address us, too.
I'm good.
Anyone from the council? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You can, you can stay seated here, and, uh, Charles will be next.
Bring you to sign in?
Uh, you do not.
All right.
We, we, we've given you the five questions, they're up on the board, so you have five minutes to address the council.
Actually, you have an expanded version of the answers in front of you, even a few photos to keep you interested. Uh, I think most of you know me pretty well, but for the record, uh, I live at 670 Southwest Tanglewood Circle, it's about five blocks in that direction. And the lady in the scooter in the back with the blue flag, that's Ann, my wife of forty-two years.
So we'll wave to her.
And she's one of the reasons that I'm here. I'll explain that, uh, as I, I put forward to you. Uh, but, you know, thank you all for giving me this opportunity tonight. It was Mayor Olson who recruited me about four years ago, and the council back then allowed me to, uh, serve as an at-large member, and I am seeking another term. Uh, you want us to know what I value most about McMinnville? Well, perhaps it should be phrased in, why did I choose to be here? Because I researched that very question just six years ago. It's when I was trying to find a safer place to live for Ann. And the reasons are as follows. A, the preserved historic architecture. I love historic architecture, and that's one of the reasons why I accepted the presidency of the Yamhill County Historic Society. We have big plans for that. Uh, B, the downtown forest. This is really important to me. You might not think trees are important, but that general, uh, tree-city look is really important to me, and I think those photographs, uh, display some of my passion for that. Uh, we were also here, we chose this because of the walkability, the wheelchair ability, the bike ability, and the relative lack of traffic jams that threaten them. There's also a very diversified economy, making this town less vulnerable to the swings of the economy. Plus, that diversity is important for a lawyer starting all over again in a brand-new town. It implied plenty of different clients seeking help in my particular specialties. What else? The relative small amount of trash graffiti and abandoned buildings. That indicated to us safety and prosperity. The quality of the housing stock here and the intact cohesiveness of the neighborhoods, not to mention the egalitarian atmosphere they generate. That was important to us. The water quality and its protected future. I like the way the water tastes here. Not every place can brag that. The proximity of the coast and the outdoors, and this is really important since we don't cook, the number and quality of the restaurants, the entertainment and educational venues, especially the library and the college. And Harvest Fresh. Who wouldn't want to live close to something like Harvest Fresh? And now we have a, a farmer's market. We like that fresh food, even though we don't know how to cook it. There's also the proximity to Portland and the Capitol without being a bedroom community for either one. This is an independent town, I treasure that, I want that. Now, those were what heavily influenced us in the choices to come here initially. But what I have discovered since then, in the time I've been here, relatively short time, is the lack of the partisan political, uh, nature of this town and the fiscal common sense exhibited by the local governments. Uh, I'm a fiscal person, I really like that, and I like the fact, I have no idea what political parties any of you happen to be. I like the quality and enthusiasm. This was important to me, shown by most of the government agencies, the commercial businesses, the chamber, the MDA, and the nonprofits. In addition to that, all of them seem to be very open-armed and welcoming of newcomers, and that was important to us. You didn't have to be born here to be given a chance, and that's not so everywhere. And I have to mention the large-scale charity and volunteerism. That speaks to a caring community. And there's plenty of interesting things to photograph, there's beauty here, and it wins awards. I value all those reasons, and I value them very highly. And unless you've lived somewhere else, you might not realize how good those are, or how important they all are to the quality of life. They are worth protecting, worth promoting, and those are things I can be proud to promote and want to promote. It's why we're here, and, uh, we want to continue to be here. The second question was that small-town feel and how to preserve it. You asked what to do about that. Well, when you have a spouse in a wheelchair, you really appreciate that need for small-town-ness. All the reasons I stated in response to your question number one are why this community at least feels like a small town despite its much larger size. So, what do I suggest as some possibilities to help keep it that way? A, I think a bypass, uh, maybe should be considered. I've detailed exactly my thoughts on that, where it should be. Trees, frankly, the more, the better, particularly along the current Highway 99 big-box sector. Perhaps encourage, uh, more non-chain businesses, and whatever businesses they are, try to keep their exterior design, size, scale, and traffic and parking they generate appropriate for their particular neighborhoods. And I'm on a lot of other things, such as that Economic Revitalization Committee, uh, Leadership McMinnville. Uh, I'm out there trying to accomplish all of those things. I want to encourage the cohesiveness of our, of our residential neighborhoods with fewer commercial intrusions.
We've hit our five minutes.
Five minutes.
Thank you so very much. Any comments for, uh, for Charles?
Well, you do have my, uh, expanded thoughts.
Absolutely. Go ahead and feel free to, uh, sit with your wife.
Appreciate it.
Kyle's next. Have a seat.
How are we doing tonight?
Good. We have, uh, we're going to give you five minutes, we've given you the five questions, and they're on the board up there, so go ahead and just approach us, and, uh...
So, uh, yeah, you want me to just begin, number one? So some of the, uh, qualities that I valued, I grew up here in McMinnville. Uh, the park system is something that really appeals to me. I have a family, a young family, I have two kids, one on the way. My wife is from California, she made that same point, that she really enjoys being able to take her kid, our kids, to the park and all the different walkways and, um, that we get to use. That's something that really appeals to me. The downtown area, of course, as we've heard tonight, is something that I really like. I like the, uh, the diversity of McMinnville, that we're able to go down to a nice eatery if we want to, but at the same time, if we want to go to a U-Pic farm, it's a five-minute drive and we can enjoy that. So, those are a couple of the things that I really like. And the, um, the affordable utilities, I really like that about McMinnville as well. I thought that was good, uh, forecasting to do that. So, uh, number two, I thought that, uh, some of the, the biggest issues that McMinnville sees or is gonna see is that, uh, like many Willamette Valley, uh, towns, they were built on, or started around agricultural areas, and so we have prime farmland surrounding us. And so, as we grow and we see these great, uh, different committees that attract people to McMinnville, we're gonna see growth, that's just gonna happen. And so there's always gonna be that struggle of preserving that farmland that we need and accommodating new people to our town. And so, I could see that as being an issue, um, you know, now and down the road as, as Number three, uh, my experience, uh, the things that I can be, bring is I'm a really good listener in my profession, I'm in sales, and so I do a lot of interacting with individuals and learning. Uh, I think it's eighty percent listening, twenty percent responding, I think that's the most important thing. Um, you know, you have two ears and one mouth, so you can do twice the listening that you do speaking. So, I think that's a really crucial component of getting along with people and learning about them. Uh, and I think, understanding where the people that might be disputing an issue, uh, making them empathetic towards their issue and listening to them can be, can solve, you know, a lot of the, the anger and angst that they have in, in some issues. Uh, and then also, I was looking at the map in the chamber, the ten-thousand-foot view, uh, being able to have that ten-thousand-foot view, you know, of what's going on, what the future is, you know? We have little steps on, along the way, but, uh, to be able to see the end of the road, I think that's really important, to have that vision, uh, as a, as a planning commissioner. So, um, and then number four, um, oftentimes, I know that in land use issues and bylaws, that there are conditions that can, special conditions that can be met for people that have... special conditions that can be met for people that have issues arising, if it so be, the problem. But in some instances, you know, I always like to think about the, kind of the airline rule, where when you miss your plane, there's no real leeway there because sometimes you have to do what's good for the greater good. So, 180 people on a plane cannot be late just for one person running late. And you have to, has to move on now. I'm not saying that we're leaving these individuals that have these issues in the dust, but we, you know, sometimes you have to make those rulings because it's for the greater good of the town or the city or whatnot. So, and finally, the reason I think I'd be a great asset to the Planning Commission is that, as I said earlier, I'm a good listener and I'm an effective communicator as I do that day-to-day in my job. And I can be empathetic towards people and help them feel that, that their concerns are heard and that they can be overcome. And I think, just to wrap it all up, you know, the city of McMinnville, we've heard a lot of good things tonight, and there's no reason why people wouldn't be attracted to this city because of those good things, the way that it functions as a whole with its different committees. So, we have to expect growth, and it's going to happen, but we have to balance that without, you know, and be going, walking too fast, you know, putting the cart before the horse, if you will. We have to do it carefully, but we have to understand that it is going to grow. So, I think that's why I'd be a good, good person for the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions for Kyle? Thank you. Have a seat here, and then we have Erin.
So, Mayor Erin Williams is not here this evening.
Okay. Question to Jeff or David. Should we have all of our candidates go through this process? Or should we stop now and deliberate on the At-Large position?
My sense is maybe, since you've, since you've got them sort of sequestered, go ahead and finish the interviews, and then they can all view the debate and discussion afterwards.
Okay. And one last question I would have is, Remy has a conflict with At-Large, correct? And does not have a conflict with Ward Two. So, I think we could bring you back up for Ward Two and be able to be a part of this. And then just keep yourself out of any discussion with At-Large. Okay?
Yes.
Come on back up. And Janelle, then, Heather. We like you up here. Janelle, welcome. Have a seat. We have given you the questions, and they're up on the board. And you'll have five minutes to just address the council with your answers to the questions we've provided.
All right. Well, thank you very much for interviewing me this evening. In response to the first question qualities that I value about McMinnville, the quality that first attracted my family to McMinnville is the town's welcoming atmosphere. We found the city to have a lot of cleanliness. The historic downtown is important to us. The trees, the parks, and the open spaces all impart a positive feeling. The town's organized with livability in mind, with the central downtown area, kind of residential hubs around town. And I like how the newer commercial developments are closer to the traffic byways. And one thing that has always impressed me about McMinnville is just the committed sense of volunteerism in this community. That's always been a positive. In response to question number two about the small-town feel, I believe that maintaining the small-town feel will require carefully balancing residential, educational, recreational, agricultural, and business-commercial growth and ensuring the land-use development follows pre-established guidelines and objectives. If and when the bypass is completed, demand for residential property will grow along with the associated need for expanded services for the increased population. For example, there will be a growing need for well-thought-out traffic engineering. Coordinated residential infrastructure and business development will be necessary to reduce the city's growing pains. Providing physical means of connecting neighborhoods with services and shopping will be essential. And increasing the accessibility for everyone through well-maintained roads, improving public transit, and cycling and pedestrian paths through open spaces will help support the community connections. The experiences and skills I bring, question number three. My professional work experiences as speech-language pathologist for the school district have provided numerous opportunities to coordinate and collaborate with others, to reach agreements to support the educational needs of the students. Usually, it's a conflict-free process, but differences of opinions do arise. We have legal requirements to meet, and so far, I have always succeeded in meeting these potentially contentious situations. Additionally, I served as a member of the elementary building planning team for Subul Elementary. We worked to advise architects on the hopes and the needs in the design that we envisioned for Subul Elementary. One suggestion I provided, and it was adopted by the team, improved the aesthetics and functionality of the building and also saved a significant amount of money, according to the architects. So, that was exciting. In my professional life, I have demonstrated that I possess the ability to learn, to analyze and evaluate new information. I am patient and very reflective in my decision-making process. My profession requires strong organizational skills and attention to details, and those are skills I believe will be useful for a member of the Planning Commission. As a longtime resident of McMinnville, I understand the city's diverse population. And in regards to preserving McMinnville's small-town feel as it continues to grow, I will consider factors such as the best proximity of low- and high-density housing in relation to schools and ensuring that new roads have sufficient capacity to support projected long-term growth. In response to question number four, I would begin by thoughtfully listening to input and concerns from all parties. I believe no one will be prepared to move forward until they feel they have truly been heard. I would then work to clarify understanding and try to find some common ground on which to build a consensus. Then I would collaborate with fellow commissioners to evaluate the pertinent information to form a judgment that best aligns with the city's long-term goals while taking into account the underlying reasons the land-use criteria were originally adopted. And why should you appoint me to the Planning Commission at this time? I believe that appointing me at this time, I will bring a fresh perspective to the commission. I will participate reliably and conscientiously to ensure that McMinnville continues to thrive while maintaining its small-town feel. And I believe that serving on the commission will be a privilege, and it'll be an opportunity for me to give back to this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Feel free to sit in the audience. Heather? Susan? Welcome. We've given you the five questions, and they're up on the board. And so, when you're ready to start, just go ahead and address us, question one through five.
Okay. Am I, am I right with the microphone here?
Yep.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much for the opportunity to speak with you and to apply for this position. In answer to the first question, I'm a fairly new arrival to McMinnville from a more urban life in Austin, Texas. And so, the physical attributes that I appreciate the most are the quiet neighborhoods with the well-defined traffic flows through the commercial areas, the walkability and cycleability of the town, the amazing beautiful canopy of trees, and of course, the vibrancy of the downtown areas. But I think there's also a vibrancy to the community itself. I mean, we have events here as varied as the talk that Leonard Pitts gave the other night, to Turkey Rama, to the UFO Festival. So, there's a little bit of everything here, and I think that really adds to the community. There's also a real generosity of spirit in this community that's demonstrated, I think, by things like the fact that the Habitat for Humanity here in town is building an entire neighborhood, which is something that's quite unusual internationally. And I volunteer at the Habitat office, so I'm familiar with what they're doing there. And just hear the generosity of spirit that you saw tonight with the work that you all have done with Henderson House. I mean, I think these are things that are, that are really valuable to have in a community. On the second question, I'm going to take a little bit longer than a minute, but the other answers will be really short, so don't worry. So, certainly, one of the most important issues, I think, is affordable housing and the increased density that it requires. I don't believe that this is so much of a threat as it is a challenge. It's a very complicated issue, though, as demonstrated just this last week by the Planning Commission's decision to deny that Baker Creek development, but then followed a few days later with the editorial in the News Register that outlined reasons that the application should have been supported. I think the most important thing is that McMinnville has codified in its comprehensive plan and its zoning ordinances that we want affordable housing and the higher densities that that requires. But there apparently is not yet community agreement on what those neighborhoods need to look like, how much open or green space within the neighborhood is enough, or how to make those higher-density neighborhoods sustainable, livable, and long-lasting. And of course, the flip side of that is, how do we provide sufficient financial incentives for developers to create those livable neighborhoods, and at what cost to the city revenues? So, Heather Richards recently proposed to the Planning Commission that they begin a process of long-range strategic planning that would address this and other issues in a more comprehensive and proactive way. She suggested that rather than responding ad hoc to these kinds of applications, that McMinnville needs clear planning and what she called "community visioning" to maintain its small-town feel, while at the same time fulfilling goals like affordable housing. So, she outlined a process whereby the Planning Commission and other city entities will obtain community input for that strategic planning. This is a really big project, but I think it's very important, and I'd like to be a part of it. So, that's number two.
We have about 40 seconds.
Forty seconds? Oh, my gosh. I got to talk fast. Okay. I have no official credentials in land use or urban planning. But I have, I do bring some specific applicable experience. I've worked with neighborhood associations in Austin. I was on a city commission in Austin that dealt with some very contentious issues. And I have a long career as a university administrator, where I helped to bring different groups to consensus on some difficult issues. I have the ability to listen with an open mind. I work hard. I do my homework. I have common sense, and most importantly, I think, I have a pretty good sense of humor. On the fourth question, you have to follow the legal requirements.
And our time is up. Thank you so very much.
Okay. I got out the most important things.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. Roger's next. Oh, and Susan, feel free just to sit out here. Okay, good. Good. Roger, welcome. We have given you a preview to five questions. We have them on the board. And so, we're going to limit this to five minutes, so feel free just to address the council in any way you'd like to answer those five questions.
Oh, you just want me to take them in order, or is I read them?
Yeah, just go however you'd like.
Okay, I'll start with number one. I think the qualities that I value about McMinnville is I think the previous work that has been done in planning has done a good job of their zoning. And in that sense, I noticed that right away when I first arrived here because, to my mind, if you go from Lenfield College at the south end and go up to about 14th Street or so in the north end, on 99, it is not what I would call a neon strip. Yes, there's some signage and there's some small businesses, but it's also very short distance away. You have neighborhoods on each side. So, it has that feel, and when you go through a town of about 2,000 or 3,000 people, you get that feel. You know, there's some small little businesses, and you can see houses right over those. And then what I do call the neon strip, of course, starts from about 18th or so all the way to the edge of town. And there it is, all the big box stores and the big neon signs and what have you, but it's out there. And that, that sort of segregation, for lack of a better term, to me, was a very good job. So, whenever that planning was done, to me, has protected the core of what I would consider that stretch I've talked about, from the college to about, say, 14th or something like that. So, that, that, to me, is, has been a good job of doing that kind of planning. So, I believe that has given us that, that, that quality. Which then leads me to the second question, which is about the mid-sized city with small-town feel, and what are the top issues, and the land uses. To do that, I think it requires projection of the future, and that, who knows? But what I'm concerned about are, first of all, pressure from the Portland metro area due to the fact that housing has gotten so much more expensive. And if it continues to grow at that rate, that pressure could drive people to start heading more this way. We've already seen that, of course, in North of here, in some of the towns that 10 or 15 years ago didn't have that problem at all. The other point is, when or if or when the bypass actually becomes functional, as it was intended, this might encourage more help that pressure. And I say "help," it's not "help." It actually facilitates that pressure to come down here. So, the concerns about this, how are we going to adjust to that sort of thing? And what are we going to do to retain that small-town feel? And also, I know it is a major goal of this council to address the issue of affordable housing. And so, how does that done? So, how are the, how are the plans going to be done? How are the, the applications going to be treated, et cetera, that satisfy that if it's competing with people who are making nice money in Portland and want to live in the small-town feel? So, you've got sort of a tension going between that. I'm just going to go ahead and go rolling through these. Okay. This talks about the skills and experiences, and that's where I'll probably take a little bit more time. I'm talking about question number three now. I have served on three other planning commissions in three other towns, and I have a total experience of 12 years. The first planning commission was at Port Townsend, Washington. If you've been there, you know that it is highly, highly dependent on the tourist trade. The downtown, the two main streets of the downtown where the landfill, when it was built, are have an overlay of a national historic district. There is a city in the city hall itself. When you go to the, to the area to get your, your plans for development, there is a color palette that you're required to follow. And so, there's a lot of energy and a lot of tension around protecting that, and it's the major economic engine of that. So, a lot of our issues that we had to do were around that thing. Then the next place that I served on was at Walla Walla, which the main engine there is agriculture, wheat and wine. This is an entirely different situation than Port Townsend was. A lot of land. There didn't seem to be a lot of energy around trying to protect in terms of keeping things nice and tight. So, it was an entirely different set of issues that had to be dealt with than Port Townsend. We did have issues. They weren't quite...
We have hit the five minutes, so, thank you. We have, we have your information that you sent to us. Thank you. And feel free to sit in the audience, and then we have Jack. Jack, how are you?
Good.
We have given you the five questions, and they're on the board. So, we are timing you for five minutes. for five minutes, so address the council for five minutes, sir.
Okay. My name is Jack Morgan, and I have been a planning commissioner for the past 12 years. Asking me, or asking me to answer one or two of your prepared questions will not tell you entirely about myself or focus on what I, what I feel are the changes and redirections that the planning commission needs to, needs to go. Instead, give me, let me talk freely for five minutes, and I believe I can answer most of your questions...
Absolutely.
And tell you why I feel it's important to continue my appointment to the planning commission. I realize this may be stepping out of the box slightly, but the city of McMinnville needs, right now and in the future, planning commissioners that can think and work outside the box. So give me five minutes, and I'll give you four years.
Okay. You're down, you're down to four now, so go ahead.
What qualities do you value most about McMinnville? Like many of us in this room, that would be the small-town feel to it. It's a fairly compact city, and there is an ease of getting around it. Everything seems to be where it should be, like it was planned or organized that way. Perhaps this is the way it was planned, or just simply perhaps it's because I've lived here for 40, 54 years and I've gotten used to it. McMinnville is a mid-sized city with a small-town feel. How do we keep it that way? As many of us would like to see McMinnville stay its current size, it's inevitable that McMinnville will grow. And for the businesses, and for McMinnville to grow, it must continue to add businesses and industry. This is the lifeblood of our community. They provide employment and tax revenue for the city to operate. Adding these businesses and industry needs to be done in a logical, organized, and planned process if we wish to maintain that small-town feel. The Northeast Gateway District Plan, which the planning department worked on a little bit, excuse me, the planning commission worked on a year or so ago, is just one way that this can be done, where existing land is reused and/or recycled. I believe the planning commission should take a more proactive role in developing the visions and the policies of the future needs of our city, while at the same time doing it in a fashion that continues that small-town feel. What skills or experiences do I bring to the commission? First of all, I have 12 years' experience behind me as a particip, in participating in the city planning as a planning commissioner. This gives me an existing insight into how city planning works. I've learned what we can do and what we cannot do as planning commissioners. One of the things I've learned is, is that we can and we need to take a more proactive role in the city planning process. I believe the planning commission needs to go beyond its current role of just making decisions on applications and becoming more of a partner with the planning department and the future city development. I have 47 years' experience in the housing industry as a structural engineer and building inspector. I love a challenge, so I believe my work experience, my planning commission experience, my vision of the role of the planning commission, and a lot of enthusiasm can be a tremendous benefit to the planning commission. One of your questions was rather unique. How to manage a public audience of concerned citizens that may not agree with planning commission decisions. Run this a lot. Most of the requests or applications that come to us on the planning commission fall in what we call a quasi-judicial side of our decision-making process. That means we act as if we were judges applying the letter of the law to the request. In other words, we are to keep the emotional side of the issue out of the process. If the application meets the requirements of the city codes and ordinance, it is our obligation to approve the request. It happens quite often that the public audience may be opposed to the request in our decisions. There are several ways to deal with these situations. I feel the best way is to be open-minded and listen attentively to their concerns. You don't have to agree with their position, but you have to be willing to understand it. For the most part, if a person is given the chance to vocally state his opposition uninterrupted and know that he is being listened, listened to, this takes a lot of the tension out of the situation. There's a couple of ways...
Jack, we've hit our five minutes, so thank you.
Can I give you one, 10 seconds?
We're just, we're cutting it off at five, so...
Okay, no problem.
We've got your written documents in front of us, too, so thank you. Before we go any further, I would just like to address our candidates, each and every one of you. It is, it's an exciting time to have candidates of your quality and your passion to give back to the community. That's what we're all about. And each of you have been thoughtful in your presentations to us, and the thing that's going to be difficult is we've got one-at-large and, and one in Ward Two. And so, but as we go through this process, I just want to reach out and thank each and every one of you for coming before us this evening. I know it's not an easy thing to sit there and be looking up at this group, but at the same token, you've, you've come all, you've all come prepared, and thank you for your preparation. Also, there are many opportunities to serve in this community, and so if this doesn't work out for you, come and see, get ahold of us, because we'll, we'll help, we'll help you feel those passionate feelings that you have. So with that being said, I think what I will do is turn our discussion over to the council, and I think we'll talk about our at-large position first. So Remy, you won't be a part of that discussion, but council, feel free to have a discussion. Our resolution tonight, Resolution 201716, is a resolution that will address both the at-large and Ward Two position. So we're gonna, we're gonna talk and come up with our, our choice on the at-large, and then we'll move over to Ward Two, and then we'll take the resolution. So I'm just going to open it up to council and have you have a discussion, and when you feel like you've come to an agreement, let me know, and, and then we'll move on to Ward Two. I'll open it up.
Well, since the people down at this end don't have planning commission experience, I'd kind of like to hear from the three of you down there, or the two of you down there that do.
Yeah, Remy, all three.
She can't talk, she can't talk.
On the first one...
I'm not allowed to speak. I don't know how this is going to work. I'm not allowed to talk.
Or that middle seat.
What are you going to do? I've always wanted to use that gag, you know?
Physically remove myself. The two of us.
Please.
Well, I'll say something. We've had some discussion about the importance, one of the, well, maybe the main attribute for a candidate would be the ability to logically think through a decision and putting aside personal interests, favorites, and everything else, and looking at the, at the issue, and coming up with a logical thought process to arrive at the right way to go. So we've talked a little bit about that. The at-large position has so many qualified candidates, and I've never seen anything like it. And we've got Mr. Hillstad as, as a member of the planning commission seeking reappointment to that. And so we've got a bounty of everybody. There must be something for everybody here, but we've only got one spot for the at-large. And Mr. Lake is in the Ward One boundaries, going for the at-large. So it's, it's an interesting, because this is new, that instead of an automatic reappointment if someone wishes to be reappointed automatically, they can be reappointed. So this is a little bit different, and it puts a, a lot of added interest into the selection process, for sure, with me. And so I just say we've got four or five really qualified ones, and, and I don't know what direction I'd go right now, but Mr. Hillstad, Hillstad has, has served really well, I can say that. And so I'll, I'll leave it for other counselors to follow up on that.
Okay. Wendy?
Yeah, I, oh, hold on a second. First, I'd just like to acknowledge Mr. Hillstad's service. He has done a great job in the time that I've worked with him. He's always been really prepared. He's always, always really taken active, an active role in discussing and asking questions, and I have really appreciated that. All of them show a passion for the community, and it is, it does make our job really difficult because they all have qualities that I think would serve us well in this position, but we can only choose one. I appreciate about Mr. Bassett, his, that he has the experience, as he said, with the construction. We, Alan and I have found that helpful in understanding the, how that works, because you touch a lot of different aspects of, you know, how the built environment, how we plan and how the built environment gets developed here. So that's a real asset for Mr. Bassett, in my opinion. I think Erin, I liked what she said about acting as a lawyer, not from our opinion. One of the things, I think, one of the primary things, as we talked about before, is a lot of what we see is quasi-judicial, and that's a difficult role to play because you are not representing yourself, you're representing the ordinance. And so having the ability to, to draw that line, to listen, but, but make sure that your view is based on the criteria that you're upholding is a really important one, so I appreciated that Erin brought that to the foreground. And Mr. Hillstad has such deep roots, I mean, he's so active here, he's already has the experience. I think he has that going for him. Obviously, had put a lot of effort and energy into his application, and he had some really insightful things to say about, about McMinnville, and about how we grow, and about what needs to be preserved. He often would bring his experience from Cannon Beach to here, and he would use that as an example. And then Kyle, I mean, the, being a good listener is really important. So I, I think all of them have benefits to offer. I think we just need to talk about who the best fit is, and definitely thinking about the fact that quasi-judicial is one of the primary things that we do, and that ability to be logical and uphold the criteria even in an emotional environment, we should be looking for who would be the best fit for that. So those are just some of my thoughts.
Thank you, Wendy. Adam?
Wendy really rounded that out there with a lot of informational insight. Definitely thank you guys all for coming. I've been around council meetings for about four years before I decided to run, and I've sat through a few of these appointments for open positions that they had, and this is by far night and day from any interview process I've been a part of with the amount of applicants that there is for both positions, so definitely stay engaged if this doesn't work out for you. There's a lot of interesting and rewarding opportunities in the city. That being said, I think I had, I liked some stuff that each of you guys all presented. I think Kyle presented himself very well for not having any planning commissioner experience. So if we were looking for something that was extremely fresh as far as point of view, I think he addressed the quasi-judicial, judicial part of it very well, as far as what his thought process would be. But then you have Chuck that, you know, has been on the, has experience, is very deep-rooted, So right now, for me, it's debating between those two. Do we want a brand-new, fresh perspective, or do we want somebody that's proven, that definitely gives us all to anything he's involved in?
Thank you, Adam. Kelly?
Well, I do want to thank everybody who came out and interviewed tonight. I know it's kind of a rough thing to put yourself on the spot like this, and it takes a lot of courage, and we appreciate all your enthusiasm for coming out and willingness to serve or to at least come out and present yourself. As I looked at the, and listened to the people interviewing, I guess what struck me was a couple of things. I was listening very carefully on the quasi-judicial, because it's really important to follow the rules. It's just, that's the main thing. And the two people that seemed to hit it best were Kyle and Erin. The other thing that hit me in particular was affordable housing. We've, I think overall that affordable housing and city issues are probably one of the biggest things that are, need to be addressed at this point in time in McMinnville. I have learned a lot just from Heather being here, and I appreciate the fact that we, and being on the Affordable Housing Committee, I appreciate how serious and important this is to the city. The only person that really brought up affordable housing was Erin, oddly enough, so I just point that out. I think we have a number of good candidates here, but I just, I guess my preferences at this point in time might be between Erin and Kyle, actually. Although I do appreciate all of the planning experience that Mr., that Mr. Bassett does. So that's kind of where I'm coming from.
You know, I, I don't have the opportunity to vote on this, but I think I will just reiterate just a couple of things, and I think the quasi-judicial ability to, to stay focused on the law, and, and so many of these land use cases that we do become emotional, and they have been some of the most difficult ones that have come before the council, in the 12 years I've been on the council, so I know how hard that is, but I would just reiterate what the council has mentioned, that the, the quasi-judicial nature of what needs to happen is so critical to the process that we go through. And as we're looking at the next four years, there are going to be issues that come before us that are going to need a commission that really can look to the law and uphold the land use approaches. And so that would be my two cents, and I think we just need to get, now that we've had some initial conversations, get down and talk about the candidates, and what I'm looking for is a name from the council that we can move forward with. So again, I'm going to open it up until a name's been brought to me.
Alan, have you settled on?
I, I have not come up with a name. I, I look at all the candidates here, and I like, I like things of different ones, their personalities, their backgrounds. Mr. Bassett brings his whole family here every few months, and gotten to know you, we're good friends. Great to have you here. Plus, if you were on the planning commission, if you were absent, your daughter could fill in for you. And that's a big, that's a big benefit. Kyle's young, energetic, and he's going to be around for a while in, in the city of Mr. Hillstad has performed well on the planning commission, and so those are, those are three names that I'm still questioning and looking for guidance on.
Okay.
I think, I think I, I agree with Kelly in that I really did like Erin's, her treatment of the quasi-judicial, and the, her assessment of affordable housing is a critical issue. So I think I'm down to two between Charles and Erin.
Okay. Go down to your side.
I honestly don't have a name yet. I was just about to pull up the website. I was kind of curious, what is our current makeup as far as like, I know Commissioner Gary's kind of has a construction background, or are we well-represented in the construction aspect of the planning commission, or?
I don't, I don't think we...
Just add.
Yeah.
Just add.
And then I may just, Heather let me know tonight that we have a, a commissioner in, is it Ward Two?
Ward Three.
Ward Three that has come to us and will be resigning their position. So we're going to have a Ward Three position coming up immediately, is my understanding, but I don't know that we have any Ward Three candidates in front of us right now, but I just want to know that there's going to be another change that we're going to be addressing within the next month. be addressing within the next month.
Um, that being said, I, I would definitely concur that Erin hit the, the high note of affordable housing above anybody else, and, uh, I'm really impartial to at this point in time.
What, what I think we'll do at this point is let's just go to each of the councillors and give us your top two names, and then we can just kind of go from there and, and zero our, our discussion down from there. So Alan, uh, if you could give me your two top choices, I think you've done that, but... I'll come back to you, Wendy.
I'll do Erin, Erin and Chuck.
Okay. Adam?
I'll do Erin and Chuck just off of Erin's quasi judicial answer.
Kelly?
I'll definitely do Erin. Well, I'm going to go on the quasi judicial and say Kyle.
Okay. And Alan?
What was Kelly?
Erin and Kyle.
Erin, Erin first?
Yeah.
I could, uh, I could go along with that, Erin and Kyle.
Okay. So if I look, each of you have Erin on your list, and then we have, uh, two for Kyle, two for Chuck, uh, so I'm just going to take a stab with Erin on all of your lists that that would be your choice. Do I get a nod?
Or better yet, a motion?
Uh, but don't we have to do a motion with both of them in that the resolution has both?
You could, you could do a motion to move her name forward to the res, to, to move one of the candidate's name forward to the resolution, and we can move on to the next one.
So I'm looking for a motion to move one candidate on to the resolution that we will be voting on in, uh, a, a little while.
Okay, I move to, uh, move Erin Butler forward to the resolution that we will be voting on after the next discussion.
Okay, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
So it's been moved and seconded that we move, uh, Erin Butler on to the, uh, to the resolution appointing her as our at large. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll be bringing Erin's name up. Okay, thank you for those that, uh, had approached us from, uh, uh, the at large position and for your service and your, uh, Charles, your service, and then again, those that had, uh, the, the desire to come forth. We really appreciate it, you guys. Uh, now, Remy, you're back with us. We take that gag off.
Muted.
And, uh...
We'll hear more from her. That was the hardest thing she's had to do in a lifetime.
Um, we are now looking at, um, the, um, Ward Two position, and we have, uh, four individuals whose names, uh, are before us. And so what I'm going to do, um, I'm going to start with Wendy, go Remy, Alan, and then, uh, Adam, and Council President Minkie last, and just start the, the same process over. So go ahead, Wendy.
Okay. Um, I guess I'll start by, I'd like to start by acknowledging again, um, Mr. Morgan for all of his years of service at, in the planning commission. We worked together for, he was there for longer than I was. Uh, so he's, he, um, is, has been very dedicated, uh, always pretty thorough in reading his materials, um, and his attendance record was impeccable. Um, I, I really have appreciated working with him. Um, I do think that we have some very, very good candidates. Uh, Susan Dirks was ve, was, uh, sharp and very clear. Uh, she had a tremendous depth of understanding of the McMinnville codes and of affordable housing and the, the concerns, uh, around that, and I really appreciated her discussion of that. Um, and then I also thought Janelle was, did a great job with regards to being, um, let's see what my notes were on her, um, how she was very organized and methodical about how she presented her ideas. And then the last one, uh, for some of my high points, for, um, Mr. Lizit, is his experience record is, in the different communities, is really impressive. So, I mean, just to start off, I haven't decided on one versus the others, but those were the things that struck me as being, um, positives for the different candidates that we heard for this board.
Thank you, Wendy. Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, I'm going to, uh, uh, start by, um, quoting what Mr. Morgan said, um, which is that it's important to keep the emotional side out of the decision-making with this. It's a challenge to do, especially, uh, when you've had the opportunity to serve with some of the people here, um, and appreciate the service that, um, has happened in the city and, uh, for the city and for the communities. Um, uh, with that, we also bring our own historical perspectives, and that too can be a, a challenge to put aside, uh, of that institutional knowledge. Um, so with that, I tried to leave, uh, that behind and just really listen to the, the testimony that was given today. Um, and I felt as though, uh, one person really stood out, um, for a number of reasons. Um, for, uh, some of the reasons that have already been brought up, uh, previously, but, um, the acknowledgement that, um, affordable housing is a major issue that the city faces. Um, and additionally, uh, acknowledging that that's a very complicated issue, um, uh, in, in whatever plan you go about trying to solve it, that it's a, a complicated issue. Um, expressed, um, familiarity with our comprehensive plan. Um, expressed an understanding of planning, um, and the financials that go along with that, the financial difficulties on both sides of, of what the city takes in or what the city is willing to not take in. Um, uh, spoke about long-range strategic planning, um, and also, um, said, uh, stated that it was important to, um, follow the, the letter of the law, uh, which of course is of utmost importance on the, on the planning commission. Um, and so for that reason, I, I really feel as though, uh, Susan made an exceptionally strong case, and sure she went there, but, um, uh, and that she just spoke very well of, um, the needs, the challenges, um, the opportunities and the rules.
Thank you, Remy. Alan?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, well spoken, Remy. Thank you for that. Um, I like, uh, all three candidates. Susan Dirks, uh, I thought it was particularly interesting that she was the only person that mentioned Lindenfield College, which we have a, a great collaboration with and, and, uh, partnership with, and, uh, I thought that was interesting. She was the only one that mentioned that and, and, uh, uh, the speaker who spoke there this past week. Um, and her background is exceptional. Uh, she's been in the city just a, a short while. Uh, Janelle, uh, impressed me with her, uh, communication skills, and, uh, uh, her background is eighteen, eighteen years in, at that level as a speech pathologist, working in the school district. Uh, that's a demanding job. It's, it takes a lot of listening and, and caring and, uh, and also to be structured in the decisions you make about young people. Jack, I've known for a long time. He's worked very well on the planning commission. So we've got three excellent candidates. Right now, I, I, I would follow Remy's lead on, on Susan Dirks and, um, go with her as my, my first choice.
Okay. Thank you, Alan. Adam?
Uh, Remy and Alan are hard to follow, Wendy as well, but Remy especially. Yeah, I was, for the amount of time that Susan put on her application that she's lived here, she was very well versed in all aspects of the city and the challenges that we face, which was very encouraging. Um, just looking at the applications, the amount of time she lived here gave me pause, but, um, she pushed those concerns aside for me with her understanding of what we face, why we face it, and how we need to get through it. I would say she's probably my number one right now. That being said, I appreciate all you guys coming out, and especially your service the last 12 years, Jack.
Thank you, Adam. Council President Minkie?
Thank you, Jack. I appreciate your service also and your good attendance. It's very, it's remarkable. So that said, good candidates all around. I appreciate Roger being here again. Or, how about, where is he?
He did that.
Oh, well, he, he's been on at least one other committee or applied at one other job, so. Uh, I was honestly very struck by Susan Dirks. I think she gave a remarkable interview and personally feel like she did be the one too, from my point of view.
Okay. I'll go back to Wendy.
Yeah, I, I think Susan was one of my, was my top one as well.
And so, um, any further discussion? Hearing none, then do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
So moved. I move that Susan Dirks be, uh, appointed to the planning commission, City McMinnville.
Okay? And a second?
A second.
Okay, Wendy. It has been moved and seconded that we, uh, move, uh, Susan Dirks' name on to our resolution, uh, that would be representing Ward Two. All in favor indicate by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed by a nay? Okay, so we have come to two names, and so Resolution 201716, a resolution appointing, Erin Butler as our at-large, uh, candidate for the planning commission, and Susan Dirks as our Ward Two Planning Commission, uh, appointee. Um, uh, and so, uh, do I have a motion for those two names?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we then, uh, appoint Erin Butler as the at-large position to the planning commission, and Sir, Susan Dirks as the Ward Two Planning Commission, um, appointee. All those in favor, please indicate with, uh, uh, an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed by a nay? And we have unanimous, and we have two new members of the planning commission. So congratulations, uh, you two.
Yeah, so, uh, just for the record, um, um, once, uh, the motion put them on the resolution, you were free to, to vote on that.
Okay.
So.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So that was Resolution 2017-16.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you, everyone. Um, again, these are tough decisions for the, the, the council, and especially having two incumbents that have served us so very well. Uh, Jack and Charles, thank you so very much. Uh, but again, there are other opportunities to serve, and so, again, anyone that would like to just talk to me, feel free to give me, uh, an email, and we can meet and we can look at opportunities. Uh, again, this is, this is a great community to serve in, as you know. So again, thank you all.
Congratulations.
Um, and then Heather, you have everything you need now to move forward on that.
Congratulations to the people who...
What's that?
And congratulations to the people who were...
Absolutely. Uh, Erin and Susan, congratulations. Okay. Um, that takes us to our second resolution, and I don't think this will be as long unless the chief has a PowerPoint presentation. So, uh, tonight before this is Resolution 27-7, a resolution awarding the purchase of one used refurbished wildland interface engine by the fire department. Chief will call on you to give us an, uh, an update on this resolution.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and councilors, the, uh, the purchase of this equipment, uh, has been, uh, funded by an agreement with the Rural Fire Protection District. They're, uh, fully funding the, this, this apparatus, and, uh, and will be in a reimbursement process once we, once we sign the agreement and make the, make the purchase. Um, since July, we've been, uh, searching for a replacement for a, an apparatus that we've used specifically for our rural district, and, um, that, that vehicle, um, was no longer serviceable and/or able to repair. The, um, we researched, uh, a variety of options for, um, refurbished and used apparatus in a variety of different areas. We focused on, uh, brought our focus down to four vendors. Uh, the committee included, um, members of the fire department as well as members of the rural district board who are funding the, uh, purchase of the apparatus. Um, at the end of the day, we found, uh, a unit that is, um, waiting for, uh, your approval for this evening, um, in Alabama at a refurbishing center. Uh, once we enter into the agreement, they will do all of the repairs that our site visit has already identified as problematic, and, uh, and it should be available to, to, um, take possession of within 30 days, uh, once that's, once that's accomplished. The cost of the purchase price is $115,000, and that's why we're here this evening, seeking council permission for the authorization to that contract. The budget amendment has already been passed by council, um, in October to accommodate the purchase, uh, the transfer of both the revenues in and the, and the purchase out. It is also significantly important that we get it here before the solar eclipse.
Very important.
Any, uh, discussion among council or questions for the chief? Adam?
What's the, uh, expected service life of this? What's it already been, 20 years old?
Uh, this, it's 20 years old, but it only has 29,000 miles on it, and it only has a couple of thousand engine hours on the engine and the pump, so we should get 15 to 20 years out of it.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other discussion?
Very, very limited. We, we buy in bulk.
Okay, if no further discussion, um, I'll ask for a motion on Resolution 2017-17.
So moved.
And a second? Uh, it has been moved and seconded that we, uh, accept Resolution 201717. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. It's unanimous, and so we'll, we'll move forward on that.
Melissa, did you get who the first and second were on that? Who was, who was the second?
I won't count.
Kelly? Excuse me. You know, that's a hard thing to get, so I, like to say, it's been moved and seconded in the, with smarter people than myself.
You have to call the ties now.
I'll do that any night, okay? Okay. Um, with that being said, it takes us to advice and information items this evening, and so reports from councillors on committee and board assignments. And so Adam, we'll start with you. Any, um, uh, reports that you would need to make?
Uh, no, I call meetings between now and the last meeting, so next council session I should have an update.
Okay. Alan, I'll move down your direction.
Affordable Housing Task Force meets, meets again on the fourteenth. Affordable Housing Task Force, March... Sometime soon. Sometime soon.
Well, we just met though, didn't we?
We just met, yeah. And the Airport Commission is coming up pretty soon too.
And there's a number of individuals that are part of that committee. And good movement being made there. Remy, reports from you?
The subcommittee of the Affordable Housing Task Force, which is a committee that focuses on homelessness, has met initially, created some structure and will be meeting on the second Mondays of every month at 4:00 P.M.
Right.
That's impressive. You got that down.
Thank you, Remy. Wendy?
The urban renewal advisory is meeting tomorrow. We haven't had a meeting since the last one. And I haven't been to a landscape meeting yet.
Okay. And Council President Minkie?
Well, we had a rousing, good meeting with the, with McMinnville. Got to meet the facilitators who was wrapping up our goal setting and then the new accountant who I was very impressed with. Very good. Had a great time. I hate to make it sound like it's a party every time.
Kinda is. Good, good treats from a community plate.
Right. That helps a lot.
And then we did have a Parkway Committee meeting. And Kelly was in her, brought back on the Parkway Committee as a member. And she'd been on there for a longstanding member in times past. So it's good to have her back and we're having good discussion. We had a town hall in Newburgh about a month ago that went over, we had ODOT, we had Dave Hoggleberg, we had Representatives Post, Nirnun and Noble that was there and had great discussion. We, our representatives from the House are totally on pace with us. I think since we've met as a council, we had City Day at the Capitol. I had an opportunity to meet with Brian Boquist and with Ron Noble and shared some of the directions our, our community have for our legislators. And again, I, I think the message has been heard that we're focused on not just Phase Two or Phase Three of the bypass moving forward. It's the whole thing. Because it doesn't work the way it needs to unless we have the full bypass. And so there's a commitment and there's a lot of efforts that are being placed on that. Any other, any other advice or information from councillors? Let's go ahead to department heads. Dennis? Chief? Marsha? Heather?
So I did want to thank you for your effort tonight in the planning commission interviews. I'm glad I wasn't in your position because those were some tough decisions to make. We'll be contacting everyone who applied because we'll have several. Susan alluded to this, but we set up a pretty aggressive work plan with the planning commission in terms of our long range planning efforts. And we'll be setting up a lot of subcommittees as citizen advisory committees. So we'll contact everyone who applied and invite them to participate in that manner. But again, thank you. I know it was a tough process to go through. It's great to see so many candidates because of the interest in serving the community in this way.
Thank you, Heather. Melissa? David? And Jeff, his first full meeting. Any comments?
It's my third full meeting, but it's the first one in the chair.
Yeah, you had it easy down there.
I did, I did have it easy down there. I guess everybody seems to want to meet the new guy, which is both heartening and a little bit intimidating all at the same time. I've been trying to get out and about and to accommodate as many meeting requests as I can. Thankfully, Melissa and Erica have sort of protected me from myself and I haven't been overbooked, at least not double or triple booked too many times yet. A number of folks have asked, so I'll let everybody know that Doris and the kids will be joining me here in town starting next week. We still are endeavoring a more permanent living circumstance. We don't have that part figured out yet. But the kids will both enroll in their two respective schools starting on Monday of next week. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jeff. And Jeff and I have had a number of opportunities to meet and we've met a number of individuals together. And it's, it's, it's very heartening to me to have, to have him on board and the direction that we're going and this feeling of this, this feeling that we're all together now and that we're going to be moving forward down, down the path. So, well, with that being said, we will close our meeting this evening and thank everyone for attendance.